Welcome to the Budget, Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee Meeting. I would like to call to order the March fifteen, twenty twenty-three Operations Meeting. My name is Madeline LaSalle Frazier. I am the Vice Chair of the Committee and the District Eight Representative for Prince George's County Board, and I will be chairing this meeting tonight in the absence of our Chair Harris. Thank you for everyone for being here this evening. Ms. Barton, will you do the roll call?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Dr. Kenneth Harris. Mrs. Madeline LaSalle Frazier.
Present.
Dr. Juanita Miller. Doctor, sorry, Mr. David Murray.
Present.
Mrs. Lolita E. Walker.
Present.
We have quorum.
Thank you. May I have a motion to adopt the March fifteen, twenty twenty-three meeting agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It has been moved in second to adopt the March fifteen, twenty twenty-three meeting agenda. All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Abstentions? Motion passes. The agenda is adopted. Moving right along, we'll do the approval of the February eighth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes. May I have a motion to approve the February eighth meeting minutes?
So moves.
Can I have a second?
Second.
It has been moved in second to approve the February eighth meeting minutes. All in favor? Say aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? The motion passes. The minutes are approved. The next section, do we, I don't think we have any public comments. We have no registered public comments for this evening, and we have no labor partner for this evening, so we'll move right into Section three point oh, which is the discussion and action items. For three point one, we will yield the floor to our Acting Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Howell, to give the next steps in the budget process. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good afternoon, everyone. Do you want me to display my screen, or are you gonna do that, Ms. Barton?
I'm gonna display it. I'm just waiting on it to come up.
Okay. While she's pulling that up, we have gone through the first phase, yeah, the first phase of our budget cycle, which is the proposed cycle, where the CEO works with Board Administration to look at our revenue assumptions at a very high level, and based off of those assumptions and what's outlined in the legislation for our state revenue and our local revenue, and then we make some assumptions around federal unrestricted funding. We'll use that as our basis to know what we're able to fund for the current year, and then Administration works through in developing the proposed budget, which Dr. Golson presented in December. So we've made it through the, there you go. Great. You can go on to slide, the second slide, I'm just kind of talking at a high level from there. So there's three cycles of the budget process. We've made it through the proposed cycle. The CEO presented the proposed budget in December, and we made it through our discussion process, where there were a series of public hearings and budget work sessions, working with the board and the community. And then out of that process, there were budget amendments that were proposed and approved by the board members, and the budget was, the requested budget was approved by the board, and that budget has been transmitted to the county executive. That, from that point, is really kind of the beginning of our process, in which we will begin working towards the approved budget. So for the next few months, we'll kind of talk about it on some of the further slides. We'll be working through the remainder of the requested budget cycle. And then once the county, once we get through that phase of it, we then get into the final reconciliation or the approved cycle, which takes place during the last few months of the fiscal year. So you can go on to the next slide. So as I mentioned, we're in the requested stage of the budget cycle, and that does include the process that we just went through with the board amendments. The process also includes our data refresh of our budget assumptions. So during the proposed budget, we're working with high-level estimates. But in January, when the governor releases the budget, we use that information then to refine our assumptions, particularly around revenue, and that will allow us to determine where we are and where we stand. So based off of those updates that were received, we made some adjustments to the budget, and we also through the amendments during that process. We also go through a refinement of our enrollment projections, which feeds into our school budgeting process, which we'll speak about in a moment. So that's really the busyness that occurs during the month of January. And then of course, February, the work sessions, the public hearings, and then having the requested budget adopted. And transmitting that over. So right now, here we are in the middle of March, and we're gearing up for our school budgeting process, and so we begin that process with our planning phase, where we will go through and determine out of the funding that was set aside, that was to be used for school budgeting, which that is considered during the proposed budget. But we now go through a process to determine how those funds will be allocated to the schools. And so we'll look at a number of different factors from enrollment, academic performance, some of the other student attributes, and based off of the criteria that feeds into that, that will then allocate the funding down to the individual schools. And so going through that initial planning process, refining those assumptions, we then push it out to our budget planning tool, and that information gets rolled out to the schools in March, so in a few weeks, they will then go into that portal that we use to actually capture the school budgets, and they'll make their changes during that process. And so that will continue on March into April. So they'll be busy working on those budgets there, and then to the extent we have any other changes that might be necessary from a staffing standpoint, that get allocated to schools, and that's also part of that process as well. So the schools have the opportunity to purchase certain positions, purchase certain positions, if you will, purchase. But there's also positions that are allocated to the schools as well, so they're managed centrally, but they're allocated to the schools. So that's really the busyness that takes place in the month of March into April, is really around the school budgeting process. Next slide. Thank you. And so as we wrap up the third quarter, we then move into the reconciliation phase. Our budget has been transmitted to the county, and then the county begins their review. So right now, they're in the process of going through the county executive's proposed budget, and we're one of the agencies that's included in their budget, and they will have a series of internal staffing reviews to look at the budget. They'll have different committee reviews, and then ultimately they'll have the committee of the whole that will review the budget. But while they're preparing for that process, we also engage with them through a Q and A session. So so much of the board, the county also will submit questions, and we'll go through and respond to those questions in preparation for the review. So while we're working on that, in the month of April, we continue on with finalizing our staffing, for the staffing that's needed for the schools, finalizing the staffing, a request for central offices. And then as we get into the month of May, we get into our updates. So at that point, the state legislature, a legislative session should be complete, and we should have an approved budget, and from that point, we then get updated state revenue guidance from MSD, and so that is where we'll then go and refresh our budget again to have an idea of what our final revenue numbers are expected to be. We also will make any final tweaks to our enrollment assumptions or projected enrollment assumptions for the coming year. That is also a grant application season. So during the proposed budget, we make some very high-level assumptions about the level of funding anticipated for grants that will continue over for the next year, as well as how much funds will carry over from the current year to the next year, if it's a multi-year grant. We also receive, again, in the updated state guidance, if there are grant-funded restricted funds received from the state, we will also update that information at that time. So it's grant season, we'll go through and make a little bit more specific adjustments to those grant assumptions for the coming year. And then normally during this time of year, if we had any open union agreements, we would make some adjustments to that at that point in time, but this year, we are in, we have settled agreements for all of our labor partners, so there won't be any further refinements associated with that. So as we get further into May, the county will go through and complete their review of going through their own budget reviews, their budget hearings. Once the council approves the budget by the end of May, they then transmit that information back to the board. So the month of June, we have to reconcile to what they approved versus what the board, the requested budget that the board approved, and being able to close that gap. So that is the big push for that thirty-day period, to get to that reconciliation process, have the board approve the final budget, and then be able to close out the year before we get ready to execute the budget for July one. Slide. And then this is just a calendar timeline of what we just discussed. This has a little bit more specific dates and such relating to the overall process, but we are expecting to get through the board budget to be adopted at the June twenty-second meeting for the final execution and on the start of the new fiscal year, July one, twenty twenty-three. Now that is all I have. Any questions?
I do have a question, Ms. Howell. This is my first year through the budget season, and so what happens in the event that the budget comes back and we are slated to approve it based on the reconciled budget or the amendments that's made? What if we don't agree with it? What happens then? What line item, any line item? If you go back to the last slide, I can tell you what I'm talking about.
Okay.
So on line item, Board of Education reconciles to the county-approved budget, June of twenty twenty-three, and then we adopt it. What happens if there's something in there that's not agreed upon? Or is it what it is at that point?
So for this year, the process that we're going through with the county, our funding source is different than it has been in prior years. So the funding that we get from the county is the greater of MOE, or the local share. MOE is maintenance of effort, and they're required to fund us at a minimum, the same per-people amount as the previous year, times this year's enrollment. So whatever that number is, at a minimum, they have to fund us that amount, or the local share of all the state aid programs. And so under the new blueprint legislation, there's a state share and there's a local share of all of the different funding programs. If that local share is greater than MOE, that's what they're required to fund by legislation, so there's no give in that number. So that number is greater than MOE for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. So we know that's the amount they're required to fund us. The only potential change would be around their energy and telecom taxes, which are also dedicated to supporting the Board of Education. So they have many different funding sources and different agencies, but out of that particular funding source, ninety percent of that is dedicated to funding the school system, up to ninety percent. So they give us estimates of what to use in our proposed budget, and that's what we are working with currently. If that number ends up being different by the time they go through their budget process, it could be greater, it could be less than, there might be some potential change to that funding amount. But I wouldn't expect that to be a material difference from what we already have, because they gave us a pretty good estimate to work with already. And so the biggest change that could potentially occur is around that funding source. So what takes place during reconciliation is the difference between what the county ultimately will fund, that energy and telecom tax, the final approved budget that we get from the state of what we're going to receive, so that is all depending on the legislative process. You have a pretty good sense of what that number's going to be, but it still has to go through the legislative process. So any changes for that potentially, and how does that then compare to all the expense items that we have in the budget? So any differences, any changes on the revenue side will require changes on the expenditure side, and that's what we work on during the reconciliation process. So we're not expecting there to be much of a difference from what we've submitted to the county in terms of revenue and what they end up approving.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Ms. Howell.
Are there any other questions? We don't have any other questions, then we can move on to three point two, which is our operations moment on safety and security. And I will now yield the floor to Chief Operating Officer, Dr. Mark Fosay, to introduce the safety and security presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Tonight, we have a presentation from our Office of Safety and Security. We have Director Gary Cunningham with us, and I've already supervised Mary Outlaw, who are going to give you a brief overview of the Safety and Security Department, some reorganization of current staff responsibilities. They're going to give some updates on partnerships that we currently have, those community partners that we work with, our relationship with the Prince George County Police Department, and position of SROs. They will also talk a little briefly about some enhancements that we're proposing to our Safety and Security Department, because as we all know, in this business of education in the year twenty twenty-three, what's first and foremost in terms of providing the optimal learning environment is making sure that our buildings are as safe and secure as possible for our students and our staff. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Director Cunningham and Operations Supervisor Mary Outlaw at this time. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Please pardon the flyover. Again, Gary Cunningham, I'm your Director of Safety and Security. I have with me this evening Ms. Mary Outlaw, who is the Operations Manager. And my right hand, Mary Outlaw comes to us with quite a bit of experience in the DC Public School System, overseeing facilities, overseeing safety and security. So she works a perfect fit for what we do over here. I come to you with twenty-five years of experience with the Prince George County Police Department, working in the schools as a dare and great officer, overseeing the school resources officers, working in the child abuse unit, and so I have a very extensive police background. I think all that brings me to this point in my career, and I can help the schools with what we're doing. Again, safety and security, we believe it doesn't just happen. It takes concerted effort by everybody involved. So one of the things that we did was sit down and look at our team, and some of the things that we need to improve upon. So we're working to make some changes over here, and we'll talk about the current status of the department and in some of the changes that we're working on. Next slide, please. We've actually moved our location. One of the things that I saw when we first got here was that the staff in the Safety and Security Office were in two different locations. If you count the schools, they're all over the county. So one of the things that we asked, and it was granted by Dr. Paul Sett, Dr. Coleman, was to locate all of our staff, our office staff, in one location. Now we have all my problems in one place. If I need to reach out and touch somebody, I can walk down the hall. It's not, it's not an email, it's not a phone call, it's a face-to-face conversation, and I find that we get things done a lot quicker when we have to have face-to-face conversations. Next slide, please. So our office is organized, the security office primarily with Mary Outlaw as the Operations Supervisor. Everything that goes on within the school system, Ms. Outlaw is a part of it. We constantly have things that we have to relay to the administration. She does that. She oversees our field operations supervisors. They are the equivalent of police captains. They have people assigned to them, and they manage the day-to-day operations of what goes on in the field. And we currently have four of those positions assigned, and all of them have prior law enforcement experience, and some of them have I think Mr. Harris has been here for twenty-seven years. So he's got extensive experience in the school system. We also added a compliance supervisor. There are a lot of state regulations that safety and security professionals must comply with. Some of them are mandatory state training sessions. We have Captain Ruff oversees our compliance with the guidelines. We meet every month. I meet with all of the safety and security professionals across the region and the state. We have regular meetings with the Maryland Center for School Safety. They pretty much dictate what we do and how we do certain things. For instance, if we have a critical incident, we have to review it with them to make sure that we are within the guidelines of what the way it should be handled. They come out, we do a national critique, we explain to them the incident and how we responded to it, and then they will make suggestions on how to improve our process if we didn't do something correctly. So Captain Ruff oversees that function. We have a special investigation section, Sergeant Shepard, has six investigators assigned to him. Those individuals generally will deal with cases of employee misconduct. If there's an allegation of assault or an incident involving an employee of the school system, those investigators will follow up with that. We have the Safety Office. Maryland requires that we conduct certain drills monthly, quarterly, and annually. So we have lockdown drills, we have adverse weather drills, we have tornado drills. So we have a safety office. His job is to ensure that the principals in the schools abide by those directives to hold those drills. In addition to that, one of the things that we've done is we put AEDs in every school. The high schools have two. We put the stop lead kits in every school. The safety office is managing that process and ensures that those things are properly maintained. If we get complaints about traffic at a school or some other safety issue, that's not an immediate security concern, our safety officer will go out, do an investigation, and make a recommendation to the administration. We also have a technical division. That division is supervised by Mr. George LaCorne. We have fourteen technicians assigned to that unit. Every school in Prince George's County has an alarm and cameras. That unit maintains those alarm and cameras. They will in the process of upgrading our cameras, so they will work on the upgrades. But occasionally, you will have equipment that malfunctions, and they're responsible for ensuring that that equipment is currently operating. Next slide, please. One of the things that occurred several years ago was they removed the lead supervisors from the schools. So what we've done was done before I got here. I can't take credit for it, but they restored the leads, and they're the equivalent of sergeants in the high schools. What they do is they generally have personnel that are assigned to them within their school. And I'll give an example. Sutland High School has a lead supervisor over there. That school, high school, all the schools that feed into Sutland High School, he's responsible for what happens in all those feeder schools. So if there's an incident that happens at a middle school, that's attached to that, he's responsible for ensuring that reports are written and that our safety and security personnel operate in the correct fashion. We are constantly looking at our numbers to ensure that we have adequate staffing. We recently conducted a work group that looked at staffing across the board, and out of that group, some recommendations have come out. And Dr. Coleman and Dr. Paul Sett will tell you, I'm always asking for more people, but what we want to do is have a systematic way of dispersing our personnel throughout the school system. So we're working on that process now. Next slide, please. The field operations supervisors are responsible for meeting with the principals. So we have personnel assigned to all schools, but occasionally we have to make personnel moves, or we have to address issues. It is the field operations supervisor, again, who's the equivalent of a captain, and he oversees usually four to five high schools, and all the staff that report to them. They're responsible for communicating with that principal and the staff in that school to ensure that safety and security measures are being met, and if there are any concerns, that will go to that field operations supervisor. They're responsible for ensuring that the principals are notified of any absences. Again, you know, when you manage people, some people have court, some people have vacation, some people have sick leaves, so they're not always in there. So we're very responsible for ensuring that that school has a minimum staffing level met and communicating those employee shortages to the principal, if there is one. They meet weekly with our leads and sergeants and make sure that they have the most accurate and up-to-date information as it relates to what's going on in schools across the state and across the country. Again, one of the things that we are looking at is creating post-orders to ensure that everybody that comes into the Office of Safety and Security is operating from the same page. One of the problems that you have is inconsistency. When you have policies and procedures and directives, it takes away a lot of the inconsistency. So we're in the process of ensuring that everybody knows exactly what's expected of them all the time. Next slide, please. Additional duties for the field operations supervisors. Again, we have schools that start early, and we have schools that start late. So we have someone that comes in at six-thirty in the morning, and when the, if you have employees that start to call in sick, and we need to redeploy personnel, that person's responsible for making sure that that happens. We have somebody that comes in late, because the last bus drops off a kid at six, five-thirty, six o'clock. So we have to make sure that we have coverage for the Safety and Security Office through all of those hours of operations. Deployment, again, making sure that we have minimum staffing levels covered. Overtime, occasionally there's an issue with a sporting event or some type of meeting that needs some coverage. They're responsible for making sure that that happened. Reviewing incidents on buses. Special security quests, occasionally the school board will some security staff, and we'll send people down there to help with that. In addition to that, we're currently working on our summer school deployment. We're looking at the schools that will have summer sessions, and we're ensuring that we have enough people there to assist. And there are quite a few other things on, and I won't go through all of them, but one of the one of the biggest things that I will touch on is that we have approximately sixty sworn Maryland State certified law enforcement officers on our in our Safety and Security Office. The other hundred eighty are security assistants. There are guidelines and measures that have to be met for all of those positions, but we do have about sixty people in our agency that do have arrest powers. Next slide, please. Partnerships, again, we meet, I meet monthly with the Maryland Center for School Safety, and we talk about the things, the trends that they're seeing. I also have a director's meeting, where I meet with all the other security directors across the state. Also attend the Prince George's County Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. It is Prince George's County, the court, Department of Juvenile Services, the commissioners, the state's attorney, and the chief judge, and we talk about criminal justice efforts within the county and making sure that we're all working well together and addressing the needs. I also meet with the municipal chiefs throughout the county. It's a monthly meeting, and we talk about all the issues that are affecting law enforcement within the county, and we're a part of that meeting. And then I meet weekly, there's a weekly, there's a meeting with the Prince George County Police Department, where we talk about things that we're seeing. We also work in an effort to break the school-to-prison pipeline. We also work very closely with the state's attorney's office. One of the things that we do, when we find a child that has been involved in activity that could be, could lead to criminal charges, one of the first things we do is meet with the state's attorney's office to attempt to divert him to a diversion program. And there's some criteria for that, and that we don't take, they don't take repeat offenders. So if a child has been charged with a criminal offense in the past, they will not take him into their programs. Sometimes we try to find other programs for them, and sometimes we refer those cases to Department of Juvenile Services. One of the things that we found out was that once we put that child's name on an arrest document, it doesn't matter whether they go to the diversion program or go through the court system, it counts against Prince George's County as an arrest. So in an effort to keep our arrest numbers down, the first thing that we do whenever there's an incident is we attempt to put them in some type of diversion program prior to adjudicating that case at the court. We also partner with the Circuit Court of Prince We also partner with the Circuit Court of Prince George's County, they have several programs that they're starting, diversion programs. And we're working with them to get as many students as possible into those diversion programs. And again, these are generally first time offenders. Next slide please. We have several MOUs with different, different agencies within Prince George's County. We have approximately twenty-one SROs assigned to the high schools of Prince George's County. And I say approximately because that's our authorized strength, but as you know, the police department is not fully staffed. So we do have a couple of vacancies and we're working on getting those vacancies filled. In addition to that, we have MOUs with the City of Greenbelt, City of Laurel and the City of Bowie. They have, those police departments have people in our schools and we work with them. We also work with the Fire Department, State's Attorney's Office, Child Protective Services. Anytime there's an issue concerning child abuse or or a teacher assaulting or having a contact with a child, it is investigated by Child Protective Services and they determine whether or not it was at fault or not. And then Homeland Security, occasionally we will get bomb threats or someone would threaten to to shoot up the school, literally. So every one of those cases before the school opens the next day, the police department addresses it. So if they get a complaint at two o'clock today, at as soon as they can, they will go to that child, they'll locate the child, they will go, if necessary, go to his home. Check to see if it's a valid threat by determining whether or not he has weapons or means to to carry out the act where he's just blowing off steam. And that and they do that before the next day, before the school opens, so we we could do everything we can to ensure the safety of everyone in terms of school. Next slide please. Okay, this is the current SRO allocation, so we do have some in they're they're separated by North, Central and South. So that that's how the police department sets them up, that's how we have our people's staff as well when we look at the allocations. Next slide please. So again, one of the things that we're doing is we're looking at not just what has been done in Prince George's County. We're looking at best practices. One of the reasons that I meet with the security directors from across the state is to find out what they're doing, what's work, what works for them, that way we don't have to make same mistakes that they made. We do look at we are currently looking at different safety and security measures that are being utilized across the country, not just in the state of Maryland. We took annual semi-annual and monthly assessments of compliance measures. We, again, Captain Ruff is our compliance coordinator. His job is to check and ensure the schools are doing what they're supposed to do, the staff, safety and security staff are doing what they're supposed to do, and then we document that and and report monthly. We are focusing on what's going on in the community, because what's going on in the community oftentimes spills into the schools. Last night, there was a shooting in an apartment complex next to Sutland High School. Two people were injured, one of them fled to the school. We recently gave all of our safety and security officers stop bleed training, where they were given stop bleed kits. One of the people, one of the victims that fled ran to Sutland High School, one of our security people were there and were able to give first aid until paramedics and then and personnel arrived. Next slide please. So again, there are some required trainings. Safe, Maryland Safe Schools requires certain training modules, I think it's thirty hours per calendar year. Any certified police law enforcement officer is required to, through the Maryland Police Correctional Training Commission, to do annual in-service. There are, if you, if you work in a school, you are required, everyone, to include myself, is required to complete fifty-six hours of SRO training. And that is required by the state and you're required to attend classes to understand what goes on in the school. So everybody goes through that. We also focus on restorative approaches. We have use of force training, crisis intervention, mental health, Dr. Showalter comes out, it's mandatory for all of our personnel to meet with him, to talk about mental health issues and what we're dealing with, what we're seeing in the schools and what they're seeing. Behavioral threat assessments, if we, again, if we have a child that's that we're concerned with, we are a part of the behavioral threat assessment team to look at those issues and see what's going on. Again, we trained everyone, all of our safety and security personnel in the use of Narcan. And each one of them has been issued two doses of Narcan. In addition, we've also trained them with the bleed stop training, so we're doing everything we can to make sure that if something happens, we know the security, safety and security personnel are probably going to be some of the first ones there, so we want to make sure they're properly equipped. So we got them Narcan, we've got the bleed stop kits, also got them gloves just in case they needed and masks. We also have Maryland Police Correctional Training Commission certified instructors. So we have people that can teach our people, we don't have to go out and get training all the time. We can do our, some of our own certifications in-house. Next slide please. Again, you know, we're doing everything we can to provide a safe and secure educational environment. We do have an anonymous tip line. It is, there there are two of them actually, but there's one that we use, the Maryland Center for School Safety, where people can call in and we, if if I tried, if I, even if I obtained a warrant, I cannot find out who called in the anonymous tip. They have had other jurisdictions that have attempted to do that. And they basically said it defeats the purpose of having an anonymous tip line if people can identify the people that called it. So we cannot access it, but we do get information occasionally and we have folks that will follow up on those tips. One of the things that we're looking at is high visibility. We got here, one of the things we looked at was the uniforms and ensuring that everybody had clean, serviceable and fresh uniforms. As part of the contract, we issued new jackets to all of our personnel. We're in the process of ordering new shirts and and equipment so that everybody can look the same. I I do believe in the structure and order, so I want everybody to look sharp and I think people treat you the the way that you look. Again, it focuses on training, not just local training, but national training, looking at what what's going on nationally and not just in Prince George's County or in the state of Maryland. We currently use the Raptor system. Anytime an individual goes to a school, doesn't matter what they're going for, if they're asking for entry into the school, they have to submit their driver's license, it is scanned through what we call a Raptor system, it automatically checks to see if they are a registered sex offender in the state of Maryland. Because we don't want to allow them into the schools. However, in the real world, even registered sex offenders have children. So if we identify somebody that is a registered sex offender, then there's a process in place. So whenever that person comes onto the school, they're escorted. If the teacher, if the principal believes it's necessary, they will work with them on that. We have see something, say something posters all over, all over the schools. We one of the things that we have worked on in the Office of Safety and Security is communication. We found that there was a big gap in the communication between safety and security personnel management and the schools. So Ms. Outlaw and I have been working very hard to do what we can to ensure that one, not only that we're going out to meetings and talking to people, explaining to them what we're doing, but we have constant communication with all the administration at all the schools so that we ensure that their needs are being met. To that end, Ms. Outlaw has created a survey that we will be sending to the principals to determine whether or not she and I are meeting our objective. We asked them in the beginning, what do you want from us? They told us, now we're going to ask, she's created the survey, we're going to ask them, are we delivering? How are we doing? Please tell us the areas that we need to improve. Next please. That's all I have. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I have Ms. Outlaw here as my backup, just in case it gets too hot. But please feel free.
Thank you for that. I do have a couple of questions before I ask me fellow colleagues to ask the question. The first one, I was wondering about when you do the trainings for your staff, are are you doing simulation training and if so, how often? So that's one question. And the second question I have is in regards to visitors coming in and requesting driver's license. What if the individuals do not have documentation? How are we addressing that? So those two questions to begin with.
Okay, so the first question is, we recently did a drill with the police department where they simulated a shooter scenario. So we do that, we don't do as regularly as as I like to, because you don't want to do that with the schools being occupied. So we look to do things like that during the summer when the schools are not occupied. And it it surprised me, but there are just as many people that do not want kids involved in those scenarios as do. So some parents will complain when we do drills, the tornado drills, the active shooter drills, the lockdown drills. Some parents will complain about us doing the drills because they believe that's traumatic. And we have to explain to them that there's a balance between practicing and knowing what to do when an incident occurs and the trauma that's posed upon a child. So we we work through that. And the second question about identification, it's up to the principal. If the principal has a reason to believe that they've identified this individual and they know who they are, they don't have identification, then they can work their way through it, or they'll contact us and we'll take reasonable measures to identify who that person is and whether or not they should have access to the school.
Thank you. Colleagues, do you have questions?
I do have a question. Hey, Mr. Cunningham, good to see you again. Hi, you know, I love the work that you all are doing in schools and the work that's upcoming. One of the things that folks always talk about is is the safety and the laughter of inside of our schools. And I was wondering, can you talk about, I know at my last event you talked about it, I didn't hear it here. I apologize if you said it, but that you're going to be doing some testing with AI and some other security protocols in different schools. I think that's really helpful. And one, if you didn't talk about it, can you say it? And two, even if you did, can you put maybe even like three points that we can even share on our own socials of what's coming up? Just to really help our parents understand what you all are doing by way of safety, because it's a big deal for folks.
Sure, and I'll give you, we are looking at safety and security measures. We put together a work group that includes people from facilities, building maintenance, the administration, principals and security staff, and even the Prince George's County Police Department. And we're looking at different safety and security measures that we think would benefit the school. And we have different vendors, as you can imagine, we have different vendors approaching and trying to sell everything from pepper spray and in the school to handcuffs and and stun guns. So we get it all. So what what I have is I have somebody that bets all the the things that just are totally unreasonable or or just will not work in a school. And then we have the work group that sits down and we review these safety and security measures. Each person that comes in is given an evaluation form. So they will literally sit there, evaluate the product, rate it, and then we compile all that information. It ranges anywhere from metal detection, metal detectors to artificial intelligence and then records management and emergency management procedures. So we're looking at all those things and at the end, the recommendation to the CEO as to which ones we think would go into into certain schools. And then we look, we're planning to pilot some of those things, because you don't want to buy two hundred of X and it doesn't work. Because what works for an elementary school or middle school or a very small school does not work for a wise or a Northwestern or the larger school. So we're looking at everything and then determining, trying to determine what fits for the different scenarios.
Got you. Whenever you're ready, because it doesn't seem like you're ready yet, but whenever you get to a place where you're ready to pilot, maybe we can, you can put like a little, here are the top three things that we're piloting in X schools. You know, so that we can get the word out, we can help to do that. So thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I have another question in terms of the there's been a lot of talk about with parents about the relationship building with students. And you mentioned it in your PowerPoint that there is a initiative to create relationships, SROs and the security. What kind of strategies are you using to develop those relationships?
So some of our, some of our security personnel are coaches in the schools for athletics. So they're they're very involved in the school, they attend the PTSA meetings. So we have them involved that way and some of them are doing mentoring of young, of young people. So we're, again, we're trying to take more of a community policing type of approach. Understanding that we are security and and law enforcement in some cases. But we had a staff meeting yesterday and I explained to my captains again that we have to cater to our audience, right? So what would fits in in Brandywine may not work in Laurel. What works in Bellsfield may not work in Landover. So we have to cater our services to our audience and make sure that everybody gets what they they need. So we do that in a different, a lot of different ways. Again, we have mentors, people that are involved in mentoring programs, people that are coaching. And then we have one of the young ladies, everybody calls her mom. So she she she's been at the school for five years, they they love her. And they don't, they don't call her, you know, by her last name or sergeant, they call her mom. So we're working on.
Let me jump in, I just want to add an added value, myself, Dr. Coleman, former principals. Is you you hit on, you hit on a very important fact that relationships are very important in in how we secure our schools in terms of safety and security. And that that goes beyond our safety and security personnel, you know, those are relationships between staff and students in general, between staff, parents, between our community members in our schools. Because the beginning of a safe and orderly school doesn't start with safety and security, it starts with the community as a whole. You know, it 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 starts with parents being aware, you know, of what kids take out of the house in the morning, correct? Even the communication between, you know, students and their parents, communication between students and their teachers, that there's a certain level of trust. Ninety-five percent of the issues that that we encounter or that we're able to head off come from students telling adults that somebody has something they shouldn't have or something's going on in the neighborhood. And it's those relationships that will help us build a safer environment for everybody. So I, so I I just wanted to kind of put that out there, and when we talk about safety and security, it's really a a a all stakeholder event, you know, everybody who's associated has to has to understand that it takes all of us to security schools. And then those measures that we put in, whether it's AR, whether it's, you know, personnel, enhance what we do. But, you know, it it really takes an entire community and 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 us, you know, realizing that we have to work together and we build that trust factor in schools so that so that kids can come to us and and let us know when things are happening. So that's my two cents, I'm going to be quiet now.
Thank you for that. I think that's very important and I and I agree. We all are part of of safety and security for our communities and are keeping our students safe. So thank you for all you do. If there are no other questions, thank you for your presentation, Mr. Cunningham.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Our next agenda item is the internal audit for the second quarter report. I will now yield the floor to our Director of Internal Audit, Ms. Michelle Winston, to present the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Parton, can you start at the beginning of the presentation, please? Thank you. Good afternoon. My presentation for for you today is on the second quarter internal audit report for the period ended December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. So in essence, that covers the period that begins at October one, twenty twenty-two through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Next slide please. So for for the second quarter, and I also might might add that the Board Policy eighty-three seventy-three requires that internal audit prepare a quarterly report of its activities. And so this second quarter report that was prepared in compliance with that. And so this second report, quarter report that was prepared in compliance with that requirement. So for the, for the second quarter, that report was issued to the board and a leadership on January thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. And for that period, there were a total of twenty-four audit reports issued. And twenty of those were student activity fund audits. Three were investigations and one was an operational audit report. For that period, there were also one hundred twenty hotlines received and reviewed. The property technician closed out fifteen six asset inventories. And as a result of all of that activities, there were two point one million dollars in assets that were subjected to audit. And we estimate that approximately six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in losses were averted as a result of that activity. Next slide, please. So this slide gives you a list of the twenty student activity fund audits that were completed. These are the school locations and the audit periods covered for those audits. The full audits can be found on our internal audit's website. And that is the link to where the full audits can be found. Next slide, please. Hotline reporting, a hundred and twenty reports received for the quarter. And then two hundred and sixty were, have been received year to date as of December thirty-first, twenty-two. That's the period beginning July one, twenty-twenty-two through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. The top five issues, parent and community relations, safety issues and sanitation, employee relations, school and office management and bully and harassment and harassment account for a, a little over fifty percent of the total of all hotlines received. Next slide, please. So the investigation reports that were issued and completed. The first was Parkdale High School. A teacher was alleged to have had a second assignment and received compensation for that assignment while on extended leave. The allegations here were substantiated. The teacher did acknowledge a teaching while on extended leave and, and receiving pay, paid compensation for that work that was performed during that leave period. Administrative procedure forty-one sixty, employee conflict of interest states that an employee who's on leave from the school system or during the hours when the employee is off duty may not be employed by the school system in any capacity during this leave or off duty period. This report was forwarded to ELRO for consideration. The second investigation was a teacher working in another state while on a leave of absence. The allegations here were also substantiated. There was evidence that a teacher had sent invoices through a Virginia-based business for special education consulting services that were rendered during the time that they were on, on, on a leave. And administrative procedure forty-one sixty, employee conflict of interest states that an employee who's on leave from the school system and during the hours when they're off duty may not be employed by the school system in any capacity during their leave or off duty period. And also that employees of PGCS that cannot act as vendors providing services for the school system or any school. And the third investigation was Eleanor Roosevelt High School and Greenbelt Elementary School alleged theft of maintenance equipment and supplies by, so, from maintenance employees. There was no evidence that the, the theft actually had occurred. So the allegations here were not substantiated. Next slide, please. The operational audit report issued was in Trotto School Messenger. This was an IT audit that was conducted to determine that a student and employee and parent data was properly secured. And it was a FY twenty-three audit planned item. So just as a background, I, in Trotto School Messenger was, has been implemented since October of twenty-twenty as a tool that PGCPS uses to communicate with parents and students using text messaging, emails and automated telephone calls. And it is configured to interface with school mats, accessing student and family information. I'm pleased to report that the audit results did not indicate any significant deficiencies or any compromise of student and family information. Next slide, please. Property inventory assessments. These are the property inventories that are, that were conducted during the quarter for the, I believe it's fifteen schools listed. And these inventories primarily include electronic access. So we're talking about laptops, tablets, those types of electronic devices. And so the unlocated items are those items when we performed a physical inventory and compared it to our asset management system. Those are the discrepancy items. The cost is what we purchased those items for. On the depreciation value is the value of those devices as of the date of the closeout. And then the final column provides the closeout date for those inventories. Next slide, please. So our planned audits for this quarter that we are currently working on, data analytics, DHR and payroll reconciliation. We're in the very early stages of that audit, ten percent complete. Sure ID management software solution. This is an IT audit, we're about seventy-five percent complete. The MSDE enrollment audit support, one hundred percent complete. And this is where internal audit provides some pre-audit activities prior to MSDE where we comes in actually to perform their audit on site. We review the student enrollment records and files to ensure that they are in compliance with MSDE requirements. Special education compliance, this is an operational audit that is still ongoing. We're about sixty percent complete. And then the new hire and background map mapping operational audit, we are about seventy-five percent. Next slide, please. And that completes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Colleagues, do we have questions? Being that there are none, thank you, Ms. Winston.
You're welcome.
Okay, our next, the item number four point one is follow-up and there are no follow-ups for posting from the February eighth, twenty-twenty-three meeting. The next operations budget and fiscal affairs committee meeting will be on April nineteenth at five PM. And I want to thank everyone for a great meeting, for a lot of information and great conversation. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
It has been moved to second to adjourn. All in favor? Your adjourn, thank you so much and good night.
Have a good evening, everybody.
Thank you.